All right, folks, let's come back together here for our next docketed item. And I'll call, as always, on Ms. Fox to read our next docket item. Docketed item.
Docket PZ seventeen dash zero one three. Application has been filed by Ridge Partners LLC for approval to amend a binding element attached to the original approval of the reserves of Deer Fields, docket number PZ zero six zero thirty-four. The development is located at thirty-nine-hundred North Highway three ninety-three in LaGrange. The property is zoned R two residential.
All right, thank you. And with that, Ms. Alvey, I think you're going to be introducing this docket.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. This is your afternoon session here, we'll say. This is an application for approval to amend a binding element from an approval for a subdivision plan back in two thousand and six for Ridge Partners for the reserves of Deer Field. It's located at the thirty-nine-hundred block of North Highway three ninety-three in LaGrange. The existing zoning is R two residential. This is the aerial photo of the property outlined in red. You'll see here that only one section of the reserves of Deer Field has been put to record plat. So you'll see, again, there in the lower right-hand corner of the screen, is your section one there. The applicant is requesting the planning commission to amend a binding element specifically, number twelve, which requires the homes to be ninety percent brick. That binding element specifically reads, "The houses shall be constructed of at least ninety percent brick and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearing." I went back through the file. Should have bought a lottery ticket. Here are the photos that were submitted from that planning commission from October of two thousand and six. So these were the photos that said that the homes were supposed to be substantially similar to back in two thousand and six. So there's two pages of those. So those were the examples that were given. The applicant wishes to amend the binding elements to read, "The exterior building material on all four sides of each structure shall be comprised of at least eighty percent brick, stone, masonry board, James Hardy type, brick veneer or stone veneer, or a combination of the same, and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearing." The record plat for section one was approved and recorded for thirty-one lots. If the amendment is approved as requested, the remaining hundred and sixty-eight lots and the future sections would be subject to this revised binding element. The applicant's justification states the proposed eighty percent more accurately reflects the first thirty-one lots in the neighborhood and the original rendering submitted in two thousand and seven. These are pictures of some of the current homes that are in the reserves of Deer Field. You'll see there are some that are, majority of it, the top right corner are brick. And then you have others in the bottom left corner that have the Hardy plank and the stone veneer or stone material on the front. And these are just some other photos of other homes that are in the subdivision. So in summary, the applicant is requesting amendment to the binding element number twelve to go from ninety percent brick to eighty percent brick, stone, brick, stone, masonry board, brick veneer or stone veneer, or a combination of the same on all four sides of the structure. And that is all that I have.
All right. And let me ask one question before I open it up for commissioners here. On the, what was originally approved was ninety percent brick total. It didn't give any options or whatever. It was ninety percent brick.
Correct.
And so what they're asking for, for us to consider, is an amendment that would allow for eighty percent brick, stone, masonry board, James Hardy type, brick veneer, or stone veneer, which is a combination, but it wouldn't necessarily be eighty percent brick. It would be eighty percent of all these other, a combination of these materials.
On all four sides. That is also being added. Before, it was not required, the ninety percent brick, didn't say on all four sides. But they have added that eighty percent is, they're requiring it on all four sides.
All right. Commissioners, questions for staff? Yes, sir. Mr. Douglas?
Amy. Originally this developed, originally the zoning map amendment was approved by fiscal court, you said?
Correct.
And none of those binding elements that was listed for the developmental plan was included in the zoning map amendment?
Binding elements are tied to the development plan, not the zoning map amendment.
So we don't know if any of the decisions by fiscal court back then had anything to do with the developmental plan, decisions for the zoning map amendment?
I'm not sure.
And then my next question is, is this more or less to acquire the first thirty-one lots to become in compliance, since technically they say the proposed eighty percent more accurately reflects the first thirty-one lots?
There are majority, or I say, I won't say majority, there are quite a few of the homes that are obviously not ninety percent brick. It is very difficult for it to be this type. I'm not sure why this type of binding element was approved and not put as a deed restriction, because this puts the burden of the permit clerk to review those building plans to confirm that those are ninety percent brick, which we will ask that if this does get changed, that any of the building, the building renderings at the time that the permits are submitted, they will have calculations of, to ensure that it is eighty percent brick, stone, or masonry board. Because that puts the burden back on staff to make sure that all of these are ninety percent brick. And when it was brought to our attention by a homeowner that lived in there, and I said, "I can't believe that that would be a binding element. Are you sure it's not a deed restriction?" And sure enough, when I look it up, it was a binding element that was never enforced.
That answers my question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Albertson?
Sorry about my throat. Am I am to understand that we're being requested to change it to eighty percent of any of those listed there?
Correct.
So we could have a house that's eighty percent Hardy board, and then the twenty percent would then, I'm assuming vinyl?
Could be, or it could be brick veneer or stone, or brick. Doesn't say. It just, the requirement is eighty, minimum of eighty percent either brick, stone, masonry board, brick veneer or stone veneer. Some parts of homes cannot be a hundred percent brick.
Well, right. So sorry. But it could be Hardy board and vinyl.
Yes, ma'am. Sure could. Yes, that twenty percent could be. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hey, any additional questions for staff before we move into the applicant? Okay?
Sorry.
It's okay.
So we only approving, we're only approving for the new lots?
Correct.
Or are we doing it across the board for the subdivision?
Well, it would be, we can't go back and change anything that's already happened in the past to grandfather those in. It would just be put part of this record. These minutes will go into the file that says that that was not part of the process that was done when those building permits were applied for and approved at staff level, that this ninety percent requirement was checked.
And what you saw in there, or what someone provided you, or what you saw was, on the existing thirty-one lots, if some of them had Hardy board, were any of them vinyl?
I did not get out of the car and look to see, but...
I can ask the applicant.
Yeah, you can ask the applicant that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? All right.
Are we talking about the rest of the subdivision?
Yes. The remaining hundred and sixty-eight lots, not the thirty-one that have already been, thirty that have been built and have a contract on the last lot in section one.
The entire rest of it could be...
The eighty percent.
If we approve this, correct.
All new building permits in the next sections.
All right. Are we ready to move into the presentation by the applicant?
Is this it?
Next one.
This one?
Isn't that me?
Yeah, that's you.
I do have a question. Okay. For Amy, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea, the thirty-one homes that were built, some in compliance, some not in compliance?
Correct.
With the ninety percent brick? Were these non-compliant homes built by different builders?
I do not know. You may be able to ask the applicant that, if they constructed all of the homes that were in the subdivision of that thirty that have been constructed, or if they sold individual lots. I'm not sure if they constructed each individual home, but that may be a question for the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay. Chairman? I just have one point of order, and maybe Mr. Urban can answer this. I'm just concerned that, you know, we're doing this as a binding element, as a revision, and not a deed restriction, correct?
Correct.
And I'm just concerned that in the future, let's just say, one of these homes that were already built with Hardy board, and it has a defect, and they decide that they have to do ninety percent brick, because their binding element stated that. So where do we leave that homeowner?
If it was to burn or something of that nature to be replaced?
So this might be a question for our legal, but that's the only concern I have, because Hardy board, I know, hasn't a life span, and I can ask the developer that when he comes up, but I know that I used to have a Hardy, I'm not testifying, but anyway, there is situations where that could have to be replaced. So where are we at with that?
Well, I think the first part of your question is, what's in the deed restrictions? Does it say ninety percent? Because it certainly should have if it was a binding element. So that's the first thing. And so how does this affect the deed restrictions of existing houses? And if it's ordinary maintenance, say the Hardy plank needed to be replaced, then they could replace it in kind. We don't permit ordinary maintenance, so they don't have to come and be bound by anything. In the case of total or partial loss of a building and they are going to rebuild it, I would think that if, especially if it was a total rebuild, it would have to comply with the binding element.
But then you just raised another issue that said if there was routine maintenance...
Well, routine maintenance doesn't require any kind of permits.
I understand that, but if they had to replace all the Hardy board on their house because of routine maintenance, and their deed restriction says ninety percent brick, so we just grandfathering that in? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I believe it is grandfathered, yes. Again, because it does not require any kind of review, approval, or permit from planning and zoning.
Okay. All right. Ready to move into the presentation from the applicant? All right, Mr. Baxter. I'm sorry?
You're going to get sick of seeing me.
Yes, that's all right.
My name is Barry Baxter. My office address is one-one-seven West Main Street here in LaGrange. I represent the applicant Ridge Partners LLC. The two members of the LLC are with me today. They are seated here. They're prepared to answer questions if they need to, as Mr. Steve Welch and Mr. Scott McClellan. You guys want to get sworn, why don't we go ahead and do that in case, so we don't forget?
Fox?
You solemn least word to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay.
So first thing is, is I wasn't here in two thousand and six. So I can't answer questions about what went on or why it went on, the way it went on. I was surprised that there was a binding element that required specific building materials as a part of one of the binding elements that was found by this body. What I have been told, and what my clients are prepared to testify to, is they were here, and they didn't remember that either. And about a year and a half ago, fourteen months ago, it came to their attention that they were supposed to be requiring ninety percent brick based upon that binding element, and they realized that there was an issue. So at that point, they tried to figure out, how do we proceed with that? You have asked a question, we're going to get to the binding, or to the deed restrictions, because the deed restrictions do not specify anything like that. So that is obviously a bit of a concern, and obviously, when permits, and I've got pictures, I think, of not, pretty close to every house that's been constructed in there that we're going to look at real quick. But obviously, when permits were issued, nobody was paying attention to that either, because I think it was just an unusual situation when you're asking that there be ninety percent brick listed as part of your binding elements, okay? So this is the proposed plan. It was, it's real, for a hundred and ninety-nine lots, they've got thirty-one lots that are sold. All but one of the houses are complete. There's a hundred and sixty-eight lots that remain to build. So this is the restriction that you're concerned about. I actually have it, this file-stamped copy that's filed with the county clerk. It's filed in book ten, restriction book ten, page one fifty-six. It provides, "The exterior building material of all structures shall be brick, stone, brick veneer, or stone veneer, or a combination of same, and shall extend to ground level." The clerk recognizes that the appearance of other exterior building materials such as stucco, Hardy plank, and drive-it may be attractive and innovative, and reserves the right to approve in writing the use of other exterior building materials. Vinyl on soffits and chases, and I don't know what a chase is, but you guys might be able to explain that above. The roofline, bay windows, and gables will be allowed, and will be considered on other portions of the house. So when they put their restrictions to record, they were thinking in terms of all of these other possible building materials that would be, you know, usual customary kind of things in nice neighborhoods that people are going to use. So there's your binding element. And those are the renderings that Amy showed you about what the houses would look like, what they were proposing, the types of construction. And I think you're going to see, when you look at the pictures that I've got, that most of the construction looks like these renderings. So you've got a couple pages of those. And then this is what they proposed to do with their modification, and this was their justification statement that they submitted, that they believe that this, if you look at the renderings and look at the houses that are constructed, that that accurately reflects what they built and what they'd like to build going forward. They are not the only builders that have built houses in this development. They can probably specifically identify which ones they have, but I believe there's been four total builders, including the developer, who have constructed homes, these thirty-one homes. That's just the picture they gave me, just showing where we are. And we start looking at houses. And so you see, and that one's a little bit tough to see because of the light, but you start out with, it looks like a little bit of vinyl there. There's more vinyl on this particular house. Vinyl above the door. That's, I think, vinyl, right? Same thing in the back of a house. Vinyl again? So these pictures, they sent them to me in three batches, so I may have a couple duplicates. I apologize. There's some more vinyl. Okay, so that's Hardy plank. And Hardy plank is a construction material that is, it's like concrete, isn't it? So it's got a lifetime warranty. It's not, you know, some piece of vinyl that they're tacking up there. This is a very sturdy construction material. There's some vinyl, accent spots on that house. Lot of brick on that house. I don't see a whole lot of vinyl. Vinyl over the door. This is the back of one of the houses. You can see a couple of spots of vinyl there. Same thing on the back of this house. Back of this house. This is more brick, primarily on that one. This one, the construction material, it looks to me like that is, that stone facing on the front, and there's some Hardy board, and then there's some vinyl on it. So you've got three, at least three mixes there. This is pretty similar, the same kind of thing.
Let me interrupt. If one of you all want to come up and, so we can get it on the record, because we can't pick you up from over there, and just give us your name and address for the record, if you would.
My name's Steve Welch at eighteen-nineteen Grand Ridge Road, Louisville, four oh two one four.
Okay.
And just as we're commenting, this is vinyl that's above the main entryway? The rest of it's brick?
That's vinyl right above the door.
Okay, what's, what's, it looks like on the garage, what is that?
That's stone.
Stone, and that's stone veneer?
That's stone veneer, yes.
Okay. And then you've got brick on the bulk of the house on the other side, right?
Right. And that's vinyl above, and that's the only vinyl on that house, is that vinyl above.
So you get around to the other side, it's all brick?
Yes.
vinyl above the door there?
Yes. And that's all brick. And that's Hardy siding, two different colors, and then brick, a brick skirt around it, and it has stone on it as well. It's got stone on the front.
Okay.
And that's vinyl above on the dormer.
And over to the left, that's also vinyl?
On the fireplace chase is vinyl.
Okay.
And that's vinyl on the dormer. It's the same one.
All right. That one looks like it's pretty much all brick, except maybe there's a little location right above that window, above the garage, that's vinyl, right?
Right. And that's stone, and then there's vinyl above, in the gables there, and then brick.
And this one, is that, it's hard to see from the picture. I tried to just correct it a little bit. Is that vinyl above the doorway?
Not above the, I can't tell from here. That's stone, I think, above the doorway, in that gable.
Okay.
So it's mixed up. It's mixed up how it's set.
That's a photographer error, right?
It's definitely his fault.
Then you've got some vinyl here, and it looks like brick, and...
And that's shake vinyl, and then it's stone above the door. So it's a combination of two, shake vinyl and stone.
Okay.
And that shake vinyl right there.
That looks like, is that all stone?
It's all stone.
Okay. So, and again, you know, we go back to where we are here, which is that they realized that there was an error about fourteen months ago, and when they realized there was the error, they figured out they need to come and get this addressed. Again, I can file on the record, if you need me to, those restrictions. I referenced the restriction book and page number. They're just asking to have that binding element amended in order to more accurately reflect what they've got going on in the neighborhood and what they will have going forward. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does that complete your application?
It does.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in support of this application? Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I was actually, one of the owners of the land as well. My name's Daniel Finley.
Need to get your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, Daniel Finley, eleven-hundred Finley Road.
Go ahead.
And so, yeah, I wasn't here in two thousand and six either, as to why the binding element was put in place, as to ninety percent. The subdivision itself, the zoning map amendment is for a hundred and eighteen acres. Twenty-five acres has currently been under development. There's thirty-one lots that have been built. There's actually, that's on about fifteen acres, so ten acres of that original twenty-five is owned by Ridge Partners, Scott and Steve Welch, and the additional ninety-three acres is owned by myself, my brothers, and my uncle's family. So when we looked at it recently, we saw that the deed of restrictions, they were just up there, essentially would allow any type of building material to be used. It said vinyl is to be used on soffits, chases, and the developer can allow it for any other area of the home. So essentially, if you looked at the binding, I mean, the deed of restrictions, any type of material could be used anywhere at any time, as long as the developer allowed. The binding element, which, just in general, my, I was involved back in two thousand and six. I wasn't at the hearing, my father was. But the general understanding from our family was that these would be brick homes. And so when we, when I saw the ninety percent brick on there as a binding element, and was referencing that in relation to contractual arrangements with the developer, I included that in there, because we wanted homes that were going to be consistent with what was there and use masonry products. We didn't want a vinyl neighborhood. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that. That's just not what we had in mind. So when we look at the homes that are there, there is a variety of materials, including Hardy board, brick, stone. So I wrote this actual binding element, the change of it, to go from ninety to eighty, essentially to comport with the homes that are there, and also with the deed of restrictions that are put in place. I did not want to represent Scott and Steve, because I am an owner of the land, and I felt that that could be a conflict of interest, per se. So I'm here speaking as an owner, representing myself, representing my uncle, my brothers, my cousin. And we are in agreement with this. I agree to some extent with what Amy's saying, is this is not common to have a binding element with numbers, ninety, eighty. So you would think, well, if it's not common to have ninety percent in a binding element, then why have eighty? Why even have the binding element at all? So in some sense, you could say, well, we don't even need the binding element, we've got the deed of restrictions. All I can simply say is, without a binding element that puts a floor number of what, you know, percent masonry we're going to have on these homes, we're just not going to sell any more land. So we're going to make sure that the homes that are going to be built there are going to be quality. If we didn't have the binding element, if it were scrapped, then we would have, we would change the deed of restrictions going forward on the subdivision, and make sure that the homes that are going to be built are going to follow the threshold, regardless of whether the binding element's in place. So I've spoken with several of the homeowners, and our family's actually financed ten percent of the homes that have been built there, and they've all been quality construction. What the work that Scott and Steve has done, have done in building those homes, and they've built about half of them, they're, we have no problems whatsoever with them. We think they're wonderful homes that they've built. Basically, going forward, we don't know who's going to build and what this is ultimately going to look like. The homeowners that live there just want to make sure that the homes that are going to be built, and Mr. Tucker is one, and he'll speak about whether he's for it or against it, or what his thoughts are on the subdivision. I've spoken with other owners, I haven't spoken to Mr. Tucker, but I've spoken with other owners. They want the homes that are going to be built going forward to be of a same quality or better, if so, than what's currently there. They just don't want the quality to diminish in the subdivision. And so that's what ultimately, yes, my family does hold all the cards, because we own the land, and we're going to make sure that the homes that are going to be built there are going to be of a quality, workmanship that we'll be proud of. Because you have to understand, I mean, the average person may own some land, and they'll sell it, and the subdivision will be built. But even after this subdivision is fully developed, our family owns over seven hundred acres next to it. And so we are going to make sure that whatever is there is not going to diminish the value of our additional holdings. We want to make sure that what is there is not only going to satisfy us, but also satisfy the county, and be something that the county can be proud of. If you have any questions for me later on, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in support of? Okay. Testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Is there anyone here that would like to testify or have questions in opposition? Tucker, we'll get you sworn in, and then we'll get your name and address for the record.
You solemn least word to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Assistant, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I've been, heard some things here, but...
If you would, give me just your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not used to standing down here.
That's okay.
Bill Tucker, one oh oh one Deer Fields Trace, LaGrange, Kentucky. I was the third house to build in Reserve of Deer Fields, right on the corner of Reserve of Deer Fields and the main entrance coming in. I built a one-floor plan, and it's total, totally brick. But I was, and I'm opposed to really what they're wanting to do with the rest of this subdivision. I'd like to back up on some things, that I have a copy of the minutes of the planning commission meeting on October twenty-fourth, two oh six. I know some of y'all were on the committee, or in the commission at that time, and are familiar with it. There was one, Bill Crowley discussed the following, that the houses would be approximately ninety percent brick, and at price point, approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. Then later down, a few paragraphs down, said the applicant will be bound by the plan submitted today, and will have to come back to the commission for various revisions. Then two paragraphs down, as Mr. Welch said a while ago, he wasn't aware, Mr. Welch was sworn in to discuss the landscaping and some things. So he was apparently here, and was sworn in for that. Then over on the binding elements, page seven, "The approval of this plan submitted October twenty-fourth, two oh six is contingent upon strict adherence to the following binding elements." There were seventeen binding elements. I'll not read the seventeen. I'll read number twelve. "The houses shall be constructed of at least ninety percent brick and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearings." So we have houses, we have, I know, two houses that do not have a brick on them. I don't know whether you saw the pictures up there, maybe that wasn't shown, but there are two houses that don't have any brick, and we have others that, you've seen, maybe there's one or two, maybe fifty-fifty, and there's other mixtures of brick, stone, Hardy hardy blank, and so forth. But that's not what the planning commission approved. I know y'all sat up there and hours and discussed these things, and I guess hope that they will be, whatever you approve on will be followed. But here's a case that they were not followed. Now, I don't know what y'all, what you're thinking on things like that. But if they go, if you approve the, what they're wanting to do, put all different materials on there, and that, the section that has been approved, that whole area of land, well, eventually they're starting in the back, will eventually come back around and back up to my house and about ten other houses that are brick. And they, ones that back up with what they're saying here, it could all be hardy board and just a general mixture of things, which would not be, would not be good for the people that have the brick homes. So, I'd like to, personally like to see it's, uh, solid with what we've got now. Go back to ninety percent brick, if, if it can be trusted, because it was approved, and they went another direction, did not say, hey, I've got two houses, one is just totally hardy board. It's a big house, sandwiched in between two brick houses. And I'm, I'm opposed, had a, Dr. Morgan's here this morning, but he had to leave, he wanted to speak. But he had to get back to work. And, but I'm, I'll make my presentation short, and I believe that's, I guess, about all I need to say about it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Alright, we'll now move into the next portion of the hearing, which is questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Mr. McWilliams?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, a couple. I guess, Mr. Baxter, we'll start with you, and then if you need to pull in reinforcements, you can do so.
Yes, sir.
When, when you have a binding element, whatever it is, and then you have deed restrictions, whatever they are, and they're not consistent with one another, like here, which has precedence?
I think they're independent, sir. I, I, so, so the binding element, I think, is something that is more likely to be enforced typically by the county. And, and I'm not suggesting that anybody did anything inappropriate here. I mean, they'd come in to get a building permit, and there would be no reason necessarily for somebody to think that I've got a situation here where I've gotta require ninety percent brick. But that's normally where that, that enforcement comes from. I suppose there is a way to have, if you really wanted to hire a smart lawyer, a private cause of action, to enforce binding elements. But, you know, the, the deed restriction, and you all say it all the time, they say it in, in front of the, the Board of Adjustments constantly, is, we're not here to enforce deed restrictions. Those are a private matter between the individual residents and the developer, and can be enforced either by the HOA or by the individual residents. And that's not something for you all to enforce. I, I can't answer, you know, I don't know what they filed as exemplar. Do, do you recall what they filed as examples of the deed restrictions?
No.
But they, did they, they did file something, I think.
I think that they submitted that possibly, it could be in our file, but I did not specifically look for examples of what their proposed deed restrictions were. But that is part of the package, that when you submit a subdivision plan, you have to provide us an example of what your proposed deed, deed restrictions would be. But they're filed at the time of record plat officially.
And I would suggest the draft of those is probably similar to what is contained in the recorded restriction, the recorded restrictions.
What is a, Mr. Chairman, I ask another question?
Sure.
What, what is the responsibility of a, a builder relative to following rules, regulations, policies, procedures, deed restrictions?
Well, I can tell you that typically, the builder is given a copy of the restrictions that indicate what their obligations are as it relates to building materials, relates to architectural approvals, relates to what rights the developer has to sign off on a particular development plan. I, I, I can't speak for staff as to what, you know, when they come in and get a permit, if they're told, I mean, they're, they're told about setbacks and things like that. I mean, they're gonna have to come in and say, we're gonna put our house on this particular location, and staff may say, well, you've got an issue because you're too close to the road, or you're too, too close to this side yard, and make them move it. I, I don't know how much the discussion goes from there with staff, though.
How probable would it be that a builder would not have an awareness of a binding element?
Pretty probable, I would say. I, I, and I, and I'm not talking about these buildings, okay?
Okay.
I'm talking about somebody that came in necessarily to build in a development. I, I'm not sure that they would have the wherewithal to go to the planning and zoning file and review the findings that this body made as it relates to it. Again, you know, they were there. They're not gonna say they weren't there. I, I think where, where we have our disconnect, and they can certainly speak to it, because, because I wasn't there, but where we have our disconnect is, is I don't, I don't think they realized that they committed themselves to that necessarily. And then we go a period of time while they're doing the, the, the pre-building type things. They're putting in the roads, they've gotta do the utilities, they gotta get their plat together, and they have a lapse of time, and they begin to, they fall into the trap of thinking the deed restrictions are what we're bound by. And then, fourteen months ago, they find out, actually from Mr. Tucker, wherever he is, that they're wrong.
Apparently, Mr. Tucker and some others were aware of that binding element because they are in compliance
Yes, sir.
with that binding element.
Mr. Urban, add, he wanted to add something.
I was just gonna ask you, Mr. Urban, do, do you agree with that?
Yeah, Mr. McWilliams, I think what you're driving at is, you, you're asking a question of a builder. But when you sell a lot, when a developer sells a lot to a builder, they rely on the developer to pass along the information. I think the disconnect is that these guys came in as the developers, whether they ultimately built a house or sold a lot to be built, they were the ones who were here during that hearing, that should have understood, especially since they were represented by counsel, that there was a binding element. And that should have...
That's exactly where I'm going. I'm trying to, I can't get my mind around why they wouldn't have understood that.
Right. I think you're asking about a builder who probably was never in the meeting, never knew anything.
Yes.
But then one day said, oh, here's a lot for sale, I like it, I'll buy it and I'll build.
Yes.
They rely, builders rely on the developers to pass along all the necessary information, including binding elements.
And, Mr. Welch?
Yes, sir.
And, and as a developer, to clarify that, with every builder, we would sit down with the covenants and deeds of restrictions, and then we'd also look at their plan, to ensure that the size was, was within those restrictions, you know, and, and, and the building material on the covenants and deeds of restrictions, not with the binding element. Like I say, until fourteen months ago, I'm not saying it's right, we were not, you know, not aware that we had the ninety percent brick only, because that's something that is very extreme for houses at a much higher price level than what we're doing. You won't see ninety percent brick.
Did I understand? And, but I, I thought that you were actually here in the hearing that day when that
Absolutely.
binding element was approved.
We were here that day.
Okay.
And, and it did not, by the time we got the notes back and everything, at that point, it escaped both of us. And so, we were building per our covenants and deeds of restrictions, which were filed with that at that time. When they checked the file, those covenants and restrictions with that same wording that was up earlier would be on there. So, we, you know, there was a disconnect there. But the, the quality of the house being built in the neighborhood is, is of a very high standard. I mean, you know, a cement board, we call it hardy siding, but a cement board, I mean, they use that heavily on some of the most expensive neighborhoods in our area. Norton's Commons is, is an example of that. And so, it's, it's not, it, by use of hardy board, you're not diminishing the value of a house. You're actually increasing the value of the house, because it's more expensive than brick to put on a house. It really is. And, and so, and the stone additions to it, stone on a house, and Mr. Tucker spoke of, you know, some houses that were hardy siding, and, and that's all that's on there. Well, there's actually quite a bit of stone on those as well. And stone's more expensive than brick. So, when you put those, you're not decreasing the value at all. It's just, as we evolved through, since 2006 through now, the public and what people are looking for in their houses, of high-quality houses, you know, they're looking for different types of character on there.
Product upgrades.
Yeah.
We need to get your name and address, please.
Scott McClellan, 30 Timberwood Drive, Simpsonville, Kentucky, 40067.
So, the, so the cost of the home, what I'm hearing you say is irrelevant, whether it's this or, there are several things that you have said that we could use that are actually more expensive than the ninety percent brick.
Absolutely.
Yes, that's true.
And, and I think Steve brought a, a very good point up. As, as time evolved from 2006, the products that we were using in the beginning, folks started wanting, I want hardy side, I want stone, you know, I want different types of products. So, that's why when, when we first got into this, they weren't even mentioned. And then things just kinda changed. So, he and I both said, you know, you know, what happens next? You know, what's after hardy side? And we don't really know. But we didn't diminish, we actually, we felt like we improved the product.
The most expensive house in the neighborhood is a hardy siding and stone house. Yeah, the most expensive house by far in the neighborhood.
Could you, just for the folks that, that don't understand the building industry, what, what is hardy board, and how, what is, what's the material made of?
It's made of cement. It's called cement board, actually. Hardy board is actually the, is the name brand, it's like toilet paper.
James hardy side.
It's James hardy siding. And it's, it's really, it's a cement board, and it's fairly heavy, and, and the cuts have to be very precise, and so it holds up. It's got a lifetime, it's not like something that, it's gonna fall off and break. It's, it's got a lifetime expectancy.
I had something to that. Also, you're starting to see in the past year or so, that on our front porches, instead of using wood and painted wood, then we started using a product like Borrel, it's called Borrel, or an AZAC product, that is a composite material that's more expensive. So, just as, as products improve, you change the line, and that's what, that's where our intent was.
Williams, anything else? Okay. Mr. Finney?
Thank you. Whose responsibility is it to write up the deed of restrictions?
No, it's, it's been, it's been so long, but our attorney at the time was Bill Crowley and Cherry Kiesel, and it was probably a combination. I don't know if that, if the binding elements actually came out of the hearing first, or how it worked. Maybe Barry might know, but I'll be honest, I can't answer that. I don't know.
Well, maybe, I mean, I need to rephrase my question. Who devises those? Who decides what they actually are? In other words, who decides in our deed restrictions, there will be such and such a product used, or...
Oh, the covenants and deeds restrictions. Okay, you're having those.
Who selected what we're gonna put in the homes?
Yes.
We, we did as a developer. Before we even came in and tried to get approved, we tried to see what type of home we could sell in this market, and what that level of home was gonna be, you know, and what price point, and what you could sell it at. So, no, we actually do that.
So, is that what becomes the deed restrictions in the deed? When you build this house, it will contain so much of each element?
What's in those covenants and deeds of restrictions, it specifically talks about the size of, a minimum size of a ranch, the maximum size of a ranch, a store and a half, you know, two-story, those things. And then it talks about building material, it talks about roof pitches, detached garages, or, you know, all kinds of different things like that that goes with it. Yeah.
So, when the deed, deed restrictions were being developed, the binding element was left out?
It was, it was actually developed upfront. So, it was actually developed first for, for the binding element. Because that binding element kinda came out of a hearing, I believe. It kinda came out of the hearing, and that's how we missed it in our review, coming back over.
And I apologize, Mr. Finney, that I don't have it. But normally, you all have those in your packet.
Mr. Baxter, just get you to open this a little bit.
You normally have that in your packet when there's a development plan, a draft of the restrictions, okay? I, I can't say, as we stand here, I, I, it would be untrue for me to represent to you that I know that to be the case here. I have a copy of the restrictions. So, so this was approved in 2006, I think in October, and these restrictions were not put to record. The final restrictions, in fairness, were not put to, put to record until February the 22nd of 2008, recorded in Ms. Barr's office, at that time, okay? Now, whether these are the same restrictions exactly that you would have had as a member of this body at the time that the development plan was presented, I can't say. There's a draft that would have been given to you, but I just can't, I, I, I don't have what was presented to you, and I haven't compared it.
So, the, the binding element of the ninety percent brick was never added to the deed restrictions?
Right.
And cannot, can it not be added now and solve all the problems as far as, except that you want it changed?
Well, I haven't looked at what it would take to do that. In this particular, you know, normally there is a provision about how you can amend the restrictions. And I'm not sure that they're in a position to do that, or they can't. I, I mean, sometimes it's fifty-one percent, sometimes it's seventy-five percent, and sometimes there's not any language in there at all, at all, which takes a hundred percent of the homeowners to amend the restriction. If there was, if they're silent on how to amend them, to amend them, you gotta have, everybody's gotta agree. And I, I don't specifically know the answer to that.
Well, I mean, it just doesn't feel like this is something we ought to be fighting over. It's, you know, the, the landowner and, and the builder's, the developer's problem.
One thing I could assure this group is that our intent is never to, to shortcut the neighborhood. Obviously, we had an investment there, and everybody that lives in that neighborhood had an investment. So, it was never to, to shortcut anything or to change anything. That's why we paid close attention to the product, and also really close attention to the size of the homes. You know, there was, if you go in there and look at the houses and you saw the picture of them, it's a pretty wide scattered range. So, we weren't trying to be the developer that's just trying to push the lots out. You know, you come in, we're offering fourteen or fifty square foot, and fill it full of that, that's, that's not our intent. So, our intent was always to protect really the integrity of the neighborhood and the investment of the people, and to just try to mix up the product line in there, so the neighborhood did have a lot of variety in it.
Probably, probably, probably the average value of the home is probably around three thirty-five in there, three thirty is the average value, with the high of probably four sixty and the low of about two eighty. It's kinda where we run.
Finney, anything else? Okay. Any additional questions for Commissioner? Yes, sir.
I'd like to move this on, and basically, I, what we're discussing is a whole different form of a body of government that we probably need to move forward. But today, you're here to discuss, and what you applied for was the revised binding element for the second portion of the, of the properties, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
We're not deciding anything on the first buildings that were built to the homeowner. So, I think we ought to just stick to that either. I, you know, I moved it, we called the question, and...
We can't do that yet, we have the...
I know, we still have others to go, so.
And, and could I add one thing? Also, I'd like to say, and we're, and we're also saying is, we don't wanna change, we're not looking to change anything that's in there. We're just saying, we're gonna uphold the standard of what's there. Nothing, nothing's decreased whatsoever. We're not trying to often come in and do something.
Alright, any additional questions before we move on? Alright, let's move on to rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant. Mr. Baxter?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the opposition. Mr. Tucker, do you have anything that, that you'd like to add, or any rebuttal? Okay. Alright, final statement of the opposition. Mr. Tucker, anything, final statement? Get you to come forward if you do, please.
I would just still like to oppose the, the new, uh, new request that they were asking for, because we're gonna get houses back there that's joined up to the section we have now. That's gonna have all mixture of, of hardy board, maybe some brick, maybe not, stone, and, uh, it's, I'd like to keep the same character as we've got now. That's what we had in here to begin with. I know it wasn't followed, and I don't know what you can do anything about that, but, uh, I'd like... But I'd like to see us, you know, we're not sure what we get back there if you approve it. Because of what we had on the first section, we didn't get what was approved. So can we depend on this being any better? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to ask Mr. Tucker a question?
Well, we're already kind of past that.
We're past it?
Past that.
You can ask the planning commission if they would consider opening it back up. I have a question for him, too.
Okay, we can, I'll ask the commission. Are you all okay with opening it back up to that portion of the hearing?
We need a motion, please.
We need a motion to do that. Okay, all right, have motion, Mr. Douglas, second by Ms. Albertson. Any discussion? All those in favor of opening the hearing back up to allow a couple of questions to whoever signify by saying aye? All opposed, no? Okay.
Mr. Tucker, would you re-approach? I heard that as far as cost and things are concerned, some of the other materials are as expensive or even more expensive than 90%. Have you been in the building business for long? Would you agree with that at some level?
I've been in 40, I was in it 45 years. You're not going to see that much difference, no. That's the reason they go to some of these others because sometimes you can get it a little cheaper. But it's not going to be a, because if you look at the sale of the houses, the brick houses that they sold and the ones with the hardy board, their prices are basically the same.
The price then is not an issue, as the guy said. So it's really an aesthetic thing.
It's an aesthetic thing.
It's a personal opinion that a 90% brick home is more attractive than a...
Is your mic on, sir?
Something else.
Is your mic on?
You can't hear me?
Not, well, I can, but they can't, I'm sure. Here, Mr. Tucker.
So it's just, it's more of a personal thing. I like the appearance of a 90% brick home better than a combination of facias or whatever.
Well, I think, and I know I can't speak for the other people because they're not here, but that is a consensus of most people in the subdivision. They wanted, they liked the brick. And I understand on dormers, you're going to have to put some vinyl on there. And I don't think anybody has any problem with something like that. But basically, the house is, should be brick is what it called for in here, 90%. And then the 10% would take care of your dormers, this type of... And I think we ought to stick with it. This whole area was platted and they're just taking it section at a time. And now they're going to go into a section that's going to be completely different, joining on to basically brick homes.
And I guess my second question to you, based on your experience, do you see anything detrimental to your property value if this binding element were revised?
Down the road, I would because it's going to come in around behind my house eventually. Not now because they're in the backside. So it won't, it wouldn't affect my house at this point. But eventually, if it comes in behind and there are hardy board houses all lined up behind these brick houses, then it's going to affect everybody that's behind us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Urban, you said you had a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just let me ask Bill. Is this section built out already?
Yes, they're just finishing their last house, 31st House.
Is there an existing HOA? Or do those deed restrictions provide for an HOA to be formed at the completion of the first section? Or is it, do you know?
Yes, we're supposed to be turned over to us at some point. Soon as the roads are paved, then we would form an association. I believe that's right.
It actually extends, I'm sorry. It actually extends out to the entire 190 on the homeowner association before it gets turned over. This is just the first section.
So we don't, it's not turned over to us?
Till 168.
168, okay, I'm sorry.
So what, in other words, there'd be so many lots built even though the section one is already completed and you're going into section two now? You're not going to set up a HOA until how many homes?
We currently have an HOA.
You do?
But it won't be turned over to the neighborhood for them to run it. We currently run, run the HOA currently. And then eventually, as we come across and we get closer to the finish line, then we can turn it over to the actual homeowners.
Okay.
But we keep control of it now.
All right, Mr. Douglas, do you have something? Quick.
Tucker. I just want to make sure that, your own record, you made, you made a statement and you testified that you want to keep the same aesthetic and the look of what's there now.
Correct.
And how many of the existing homes are brick, all brick?
I would, it's hard to say. I would say 31, I would say probably 20, I just have to be guessing at it. Probably 23 or four of them are all, all brick acceptable.
Do they have like stone and hardy board mixed in with that brick, too?
No, not those I'm talking about. There's two of them that don't have any brick on them. And then there's one that's probably 40% brick, 60 hardy board. And then there's some that's got some stone on it. So I'm thinking probably 23 or four that are complete brick.
So...
Be acceptable.
So you're stating that the majority of them are 90% brick?
Yes, I'd say so.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Horton, one more, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walsh, the counsel here said that when he was asking you about homeowner association, you said, you haven't turned it over to them as yet since this first section's completed. And you said at some point, we will turn that over.
As we get closer to the final 198, then we will turn it over actually to the neighborhood. And then they will, they will run it themselves.
As you get closer to the 198?
Yes. And we'll make that decision, probably somewhere between 168 and 198.
So, okay, so it'll be at least like 160, you're saying?
At least, yes.
Before it's turned over to the homeowner association? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Baxter, final statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my client does not dispute that they were here. They were clearly here when that binding element got granted. I think what they are saying to you is that their interpretation of that binding element, number one was they didn't really think that, I don't think they just clicked with them that 90% was 90%. But two is I think they're looking at a combination of high-quality building materials that they have approved and that they have built with in this section of the neighborhood. I want to take issue, I respect Mr. Tucker very much, but I want to take issue with his statement about the number of houses in this development that are all brick. I showed you pictures of the vast majority of the houses. And there was house after house with vinyl, with hardy board, with, with stone, with that stone facing, the veneer that was on these houses. So, and all of that is high-quality, good building material that is called for and consistent with what people want today. So my client is trying to be in a position that they are not violating the binding element, that they are dealing with the spirit of the binding element and that they are also compliant with the deed restrictions. My client testified, you know, you've got some very nice, expensive homes and it does them no good to cheapen or degrade the value of the houses that are, that are being built in there because that just cuts into their profit margin. They don't have any interest in doing that. They just want the freedom to be able to choose these high-quality materials that are consistent with the restrictions that got recorded. Again, they understand that they made a mistake and they're not saying they didn't. But they're here asked, trying to correct that mistake and they're asking for you all to approve this amendment. Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Baxter, thank you. And with that...
One brief closing comment as well. And one of the initial homes that was built in the subdivision was hardy board and I believe it has stone on it. It's actually the most expensive home in the subdivision. I think it sold for over 400,000 a couple of years ago. And the subdivision was built and started in 2007. And there was not one complaint regarding that home or any other home that had been built from 2007 voiced to me. Maybe Mr. Urban can speak to any complaints he received regarding the actual masonry products that were used to build the homes from that point all the way up until, well, today, Mr. Tucker has expressed that he would like every home to be 90% brick. But no, not one complaint regarding the actual quality, the construction of these homes. My main concern as an owner, and my brother's main concern as an owner, is that when we go forward with the additional land with the homes that are being built, that they're built in a manner and a quality that is the same as what's there. So if you see a couple of homes, too, that have hardy board on them, which yes, would not comport with the binding element, but would with their deed of restrictions, there is that incongruence there, that going forward, that we take care of, there is no incongruence. Because we don't want to, we don't want to have any builders be reluctant to want to come in and build because there is this incongruity between the two. So if they're, if it's, if they comport with one another, then what you would see from us is our word that there's not going to be, as Mr. Tucker indicated, 30 hardy board homes next to them. Well, there's two hardy board homes there right now. I would envision over the next 30, if the binding element were changed, there would be that same proportion. In other words, I want to have the same proportion of what's there to continue going forward. And we don't want to diminish what's there. I don't believe that Mr. Tucker's property value is going to be diminished in any way, shape, or form by this particular binding element. And the last thing I want to say is that the current binding element has 90% brick. That allows for, if you have the surface area of each house, the front, the sides, and the back to be the same, you could have 100% brick on the front, the sides, and you could reserve almost half of the back to be vinyl. And there's one house in there that was shown that has that. I frankly don't like that house. But ultimately, you can do that. This current binding element says 80% on each side. So you can't have half of a home to have vinyl on it. Mainly for me, and everybody has a different take on what they, what they're most concerned about. To me, it's limiting the vinyl. I just want it to be for decorative elements and make sure that we have masonry product, predominantly brick on all the other homes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, Docket PZ 1703, or 013 is now closed. And I'll call on Mr. Urban to outline what's being requested on this binding element change.
Again, the request is to change binding element number 12, the original binding elements, to read that the exterior building material on all four sides of each structure shall be comprised of at least 80% brick, stone, masonry board, brick veneer or stone veneer or a combination of the same, and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearing. And I'm assuming those are the pictures that they were shown, we were shown of the existing houses in section one. If you so choose to consider approving this change, there'll be two binding elements. One is that this approval shall only apply to binding element number 12 of the original binding elements considered at this April 25th, 2017 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. And all other conditions of approval from Docket PZ 06034 shall remain in effect. And what I'd like to add is that, I'm going to preface this by a comment. Given that the number of permits that we issue annually, it's difficult for us to verify each and every building permit complying with some binding element or deed restriction, whatever it might be. So I'd like to add a binding element that says the applicant must clearly show areas, measurement, and percent on each side for every permit application. So it'd become binding that they actually show us that. We don't have to measure it.
Frankly, I think it should also be...
Turn your mic on, sir, please.
Frankly, I think they should also amend those deed restrictions to include the requirement of this as a part of their deed restrictions so that every, it'll be of public record and every builder and every purchaser will know what those conditions are.
Right.
Just one question. I think Mr. Baxter testified or said that that could be an issue if they depended on how those are written as to what percent has to agree to that. Is that...
My guess is right now, they have 100% control over those deed restrictions as a developer. And as long as they don't turn it over to the homeowner association, they retain that right. I do believe that, Mr. Baxter, and if I'm wrong, so I'll...
Okay.
That's what you got to say.
And be it as it may, even if it's difficult, it's incumbent that they revise those because how else does somebody know? How else does a person know? Because they won't come look for a binding element, they would look for a deed restriction.
Okay.
And again, these are all in the light of whether you're considering approving this request.
And also, the deed restrictions are required at the time for record plat. So we would have to, we would, could verify that the information has been updated in the deed restrictions before it goes to record for future sections. That is a requirement with record plat.
And thanks for bringing that up because that's, even the future deed restrictions could be made according to this decision today.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the, what's being requested here. I see some hands going up. Is that for motion or, I'd like to get a motion on the floor so we can discuss.
I have a question before we have a motion, if I may. And the question is, could we have a motion to just eliminate binding element 12 and let them work with that in their own deed restrictions and take it out of the hands of planning and zoning?
Well, before you get, I would want, you're going to have to go right back to with more testimony as to what current owners want, the developers want, Mr. Finley wants. You could do that.
Well, it goes back to what you said just a few minutes ago about that right now, this is all in the hands of the developer. The homeowners have not received, are not part of an HOA or don't have control of an HOA. So therefore, they have, they have complete control. If they went back and we just, I can't see why we're involved with a binding element for the, for the construction materials on a house.
Well, Mr. Finney, one thing I would say as chairman is, you know, the hearing that we're at today, which was advertised, you know, says this is what is being requested. So I think to change that, or, you know, we'd have to go through a different process and a different hearing. And it would have to, it would need to be advertised and the adjoining owners and, you know, would have to be notified and whatever. I mean, I'm just, I would assume that...
So it would be, it would be a procedural thing?
Sure, absolutely. Because we, you know, that's not what is being requested today. So I mean, we either vote this up or down, you know, I would, would assume. And then, you know, go from there. But, Mr. Collins, would that would be correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, let's get a motion on the floor first and then we'll open it up for discussion. But the, this is on Docket PZ 17013, which is a request to amend the binding element. Number 12, I believe it is, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have a, have a motion on, from the commissioners? Don't everybody jump at once. Let me ask our counsel, if we don't get a motion, what happens?
It didn't pass.
Nothing changed.
It's just... Yeah.
Well, but are we forced to have a decision?
Are we, are we required to make a decision of some sort? I know like on subdivision plans and zoning map amendments, it says we have to make a decision within 90 days. This is a request from the planning commission. If we don't, does it automatically be approved? And I don't know, I don't have that statute with me, but I know it's in there for bigger decisions.
Well, I think the cleaner thing is, you know, either way, we get, you know, get a motion to either approve it or deny it. And then we, you know, move from there. Mr. Williams?
Is it a problem if I made a motion to approve this, but after discussion, I voted against it?
Yeah, that would be your prerogative.
Okay.
I mean...
I'm going to propose a motion simply to get it on the table.
Absolutely.
Because I think there needs to be some discussion.
I agree.
But I don't want you all to think that I've finally gone over the edge.
Yeah, well, no, that's your prerogative. I mean, you can, you know, you can do a motion in the affirmative and then, you know, not support it. So, sure.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we approve the request to change binding element number 12 to read.
Turn your mic on.
No, sir. To read, "The exterior building material on, of all four sides of each structure shall be comprised of at least 80% brick, stone, masonry board, James Hardy-type brick veneer, stone veneer, or a combination of same, and shall be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearing." To include the two binding elements that I could not possibly repeat that Mr. Urban...
Outline.
Outline for the commission.
Okay. Perfect. All right. We got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Smith, seconds. All right. Now, we'll open it up for discussion on the motion to approve. Yes, Mr. Horton and then Ms. Albertson?
Thank you. I'll start. If I'm not mistaken, there were seventeen binding elements, at least that's what I've heard, which was quite a few. And it gave us a guarantee to, to us and to the public that ninety percent of these houses would be brick. Apparently, that was important at the time. If we change that, we have no guarantee of anything. If they chose to make these other hundred sixty homes all vinyl, they could do so. Or make them all hardy board. They could, they could do so, or portions of them. So, Jim, move.
Well, if I can just, because I put in, one of the binding elements is the applicant must clearly show the areas, measurement, and percent on each of the sides for every permit application submitted.
And it says eighty percent.
So, you're, so we'd be putting a binding element on, on the change that is trying to attempt to correct the first major problem?
Well, it would be that putting it in their hands to be responsible, to adhere to this binding element.
Well, I was, Joe beat me to it, I think. I was prepared to make a motion to deny, but I'll go with his. I think they were present at the hearing. I think we've already made an error on thirty homes or more. I think to go back and change something that people counted on, the homes were supposed to be built that way, et cetera, for us to go back, change that, and hope that everything is okay, even though we would have the amendment or the binding element on the new one, would be something I'm not willing to vote for. So, that's my commentary.
Okay. Ms. Albertson?
I have a question here. It's in that eighty percent thing. It says, "These should be substantially similar to the renderings presented during the hearing." And they are here, and these are almost entirely all brick. This is what was listed with that.
But those are in the staff report. Those are, your staff gave you those. What they presented were pictures during the hearing.
So, that's what that's...
Those are your staff report. Those aren't the ones we're referring to.
We're not referring to these.
That's correct.
The ones you couldn't see.
All right. Thank you.
Hold on a second.
The ones that are in your staff report are the pictures that were presented in 2006.
Before, yes.
The motion is to, the homes will be similar to those that were presented today. So, the, the pictures that Mr. Baxter had in his presentation that showed the different types of materials, that's what it's referring to in the new motion.
Thank you for that clarification.
Hey, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think where I'm hung up on is that we're jumping from the binding, the original binding element number twelve, which was the ninety percent brick, be constructed on a home that was put in that and approved by the previous, I believe, approved by the commissioners back then, and also was probably rendered to fiscal court during that time period, even though they didn't vote on that. They vote on the map amendment, but being aware of fiscal court, knowing that they probably also asked those questions. But I guess where I'm hung up, let me just clarify, though, fiscal court can add to the body of a binding element, but they cannot take away from the body of a binding element. Exactly. So, they're, they're read those binding elements. So, you know, those magistrates, the court approved that development plan probably with those binding elements, even though we, this, the commissioners voted to approve them. But I guess my concerns is that we're moving from ninety percent brick to eighty percent brick, stone, masonry board, brick veneer, stone veneer, or a combination of the same on each side. So, we're, we're, we're jumping, and it doesn't say eighty percent brick, it just says eighty percent on each side. So, it doesn't, and it also says, "Or a combination of the same," which could give the builder the opportunity to say, "I'll put eighty percent hardy board and then put twenty percent stone on the house." Or he could say, "I could put eighty percent brick on one side and then twenty percent hardy board on the rest," or vice versa. So, we moved from ninety percent brick total on a house to eighty percent that they're requesting for each side, which is, to me, a much downgrader of what, what they had before. Now, if they had said we want to do eighty percent brick, and with a combination of hardy board, but it has to be eighty percent brick, but they kind of leaving the option open to where they could do more hardy board and then less brick. So, I just, I guess that's where I'm hung up, because originally, I, I didn't realize that it was for each side, not eighty percent brick, until during the conversation and testimony, listening to them, that's where I got that from them. Even in their staff report, I saw it now. So, that's where I'm hung up.
Ms. Smith?
I don't know if any discussion...
My problem is, they kept saying if, they found this out fourteen months ago, and they wanted to correct this, but nobody said why it took fourteen months to get to here to make the correction. And I have a problem with that issue. If, if I'm, if I've done something wrong, and I want to correct it and make it right for Mr. Tucker and the other thirty homeowners in there, I want to explain why that happened and why it took so long to get from A to Z. And I don't appreciate that as a member of this commission.
Any further discussion on this motion to approve? Ready to vote?
Okay.
And everybody understands that this is a motion to approve the, to amend the binding element number twelve, number six? Which one was it? I'm sorry.
Twelve.
Number twelve. Binding element number twelve. And this, if you vote in the affirmative, this is to approve that. So, just be aware of that.
Including the conditions.
Including the conditions that were outlined by Mr. Urban. All right. Ms. Fox, go ahead and take the vote. And like I say, this is a motion to approve.
Ms. Albertson?
No.
Dr. Arvin?
No.
Ms. Bonet?
She had the...
Oh, she had the...
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Mr. Finney?
No.
Mr. Douglas?
No.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Klingefus?
No.
Mr. Mesker?
No.
Mr. Mick Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Neal?
No.
The docket PZ 17013, the motion to approve failed on a vote of one to ten. So...
You have, doesn't he have to, now you have to have a motion to deny, otherwise you, you've got a motion to approve failed. Don't you have to have a motion to...
No, if it's, if it's failed, it's failed. You don't have to redo it. The motion was...
All right. That, that docket is complete, and that motion to amend failed. And we will, do y'all want to take a few-minute recess? Let's take a ten-minute recess to reset for our next docket.
You might as well just keep voting then.
But this motion, the motion was, you know,...